Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January fourteenth, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March thirty first, two thousand twenty five, under legislation enacted on March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three. The statute, chapter two of the Acts of two thousand twenty three, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV, and we will begin with the Fudge of Allegiance.
We move on to correspondence.
Before I begin correspondence, let me apologize in advance for any mispronunciation of any names from said correspondence.
Fair.
We have an email from Ms. Bernadette Delivering dated November the twelfth, two thousand twenty four, regarding parent teacher conferences. We have an email from Ms. Kayla Worlin dated November nineteenth, two thousand twenty four, announcing students who were accepted into the Western Massachusetts Senior District Festival. We have an email from Ms. Jessica Coate dated November twentieth, two thousand twenty four, regarding contract negotiations with the Long Meadow Education Association, Unit D. We have an email from Mr. Richard Alver dated November twenty first, two thousand twenty four, regarding the traffic at Long Meadow High School. And lastly, we have a memo from a Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of the Occupational Education at the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center, regarding the Walter E. Quigley, Jr., Student of the Month Award for November, two thousand twenty four.
Yeah, I don't see the name for that, but hold on, we've got that. Um. I don't see a Long Meadow student, so they must have just sent it. I don't see a name from Long Meadow. Anybody else see one? No?
Not sure.
Okay. Nope, I don't see one. Okay.
Would you like me to strike that from the record?
I was looking for the same thing. No, no, it's still an email. You were totally right. I just also was looking for the name of the student, thinking there might be one.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to approval of minutes, we have a few minutes to recommend. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the December fifth, two thousand twenty. Can I do all three at once?
No, we'll do them one at a time.
Then do them one at a time, all right. December fifth, two thousand twenty four, school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. There's another.
I am further moved that the school committee approve the minutes to the December tenth, two thousand twenty four, school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. And finally?
Filled with kinetic energy, I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the January ninth, two thousand twenty five, school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Public speak, we do not have any members of the public here and none online, so we will roll on forward to business with guests, which brings us to our Student Advisory Council and Ms. Heidi Drilak, Assistant Principal over at the high school. Come on in, we'll turn over to you guys.
Okay, so to start, we had, right before break, we had our talent show, senior versus faculty basketball game and makerspace, like the last couple blocks before an afternoon block on Friday before we left. So for the talent show, we had a real good variety of student performances, including a band to finish it off with both teachers and students performing, as well as our VR game performance by one of our students, which was really cool to see. And then in the makerspace, students could participate in craft making and stuff along those lines in semae, and then also the basketball game got really good attendance with students watching, and it was a really good environment in there.
This week, we have midterms, there's three midterms tomorrow and Thursday, and then two midterms on Friday, and then after midterms, the second semester will start with quarter three beginning on January twenty first. And then next Friday, January twenty fourth, we're going to have the Special Olympics Unified Bocce Tournament at Murdoch High School with around eleven other schools, and it's free for students to attend and watch and either play in or cheer on the team.
And then just for a quick athletics update, we're kind of in the middle of the regular season right now, Western Mass stuff will start up in like two or three weeks, and then after that, teams will move into the state tournament.
All right, that's everything. All right, any questions, comments, feedback?
Who won?
It was teachers, right?
No.
It was the students by one point, and I still question that.
We've got controversy.
Still question that.
Okay. Let's say you really buried the lead on that.
All right, well, good luck with midterms next week, or this week, and hope that it all goes well, and we'll see you again soon. Thank you, thanks for coming out. All right, moving forward into Chair Report, just welcome back to everybody into the new year. It's good to see the emails flying with lots of great activities and events already starting to fill up everybody's calendars, and thank you to everybody for all the work they're putting in, making all of those things go so well. Any other school committee recognitions and announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll head over towards Director Shea, Superintendent's report.
Just a couple items for you tonight, and I can do it in the form of a show and tell, sort of. First, I want to hit on the news that we had a data breach, that Power School experienced a data breach, and that affected staff and student data. There was a several, we've recently posted the data fields that were copied and exported from Power School, and we had notified staff and families of this. For the most part, we were, it was data that did not include social security numbers, but as I explained in an email to families, there were, and staff, there were some students who had either separated from us or graduated in the years between two thousand five, two thousand nine, that in fact had social security numbers copied and exported as a result of the Power School data breach. So it's our job now to do our best, make our best effort to reach out to those former graduates, those former students, to let them know of this data breach and extend credit monitoring to them through Power School. And so I just wanted to share with the committee, and I'll just share the screen if I could, a website that we put together to provide staff and community with the critical information they need as a result of the data breach. So right on the landing page for the district website, there's a link that would take you to the Power School data breach updates, and you'll see that, I won't go through all the fields here, but we've included all the communication we received from Power School on this matter, and FAQ from Power School, I've included the messages that I've sent to staff and families on this. And then, just in the interest of full transparency, we copied, we let staff and families know what data fields were breached, and our tech team did a nice job of kind of translating the data fields to help families and staff understand what information might have been included in that data field. And so the student data fields are there, and then the staff data fields as well. So personally identifiable information that included names, addresses, dates of birth, and, you know, I'd encourage anyone with questions to take a look at the information that we posted. I'll send this out to families tomorrow, just so that they can be specifically directed to that, but I want to thank RIT team for jumping on this so quickly. They really did some nice forensic work to help us understand what data was exported from Power School, and they've been on a series of webinars and phone calls with Power School, as Tom and I have been as well. We have been in touch with our attorneys on this matter, who in turn have been squeezing Power School to make sure that Power School is being responsive to Long Meadow Public Schools, and so confident that in the very near future, we will have access, we will have the ability to offer credit monitoring through Power School. So we'll stay on top of that. You know, again, grateful to our IT team for really jumping on us and helping us understand the ins and outs of this, of this data breach, and it really underscores the, once again, the importance of cybersecurity, and, you know, there'll be some additional reviews that we will conduct as a result of this incident. So if the committee has any questions or anything, any input for us, there might be questions that I am in a position to answer, or there might be questions I can take back to our IT team, so happy to, happy to field any questions you might have about that.
All right, questions from anyone? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, and lots of information to review if anybody is interested. The other thing, on a lighter note, that I wanted to share with the committee and the community is some of our recent work associated with the building project, and so this file here is the most recent iteration of the floor plan from Jones and Witzit Architects. Our entire central office admin team and middle school admin team met with JWA on the thirteenth, just to sort of take a look at the floor plan and the adjacencies that they have mapped out, and really to make sure that we have sort of spaces and well-defined spaces and supportive spaces for the entire middle school program. So we continue to work with JWA as they refine the schematic design. This work will, the schematic design work will be done sometime in the spring and submitted to the MSBA, but we'll send, be sure to send this, a recent iteration of the floor plan off to the community and the staff as well. So some exciting work, and, you know, we're, I'm grateful to the administrative team for kind of putting their heads together and providing JWA with some critical feedback to make sure that we've got some great spaces laid out for, for our staff and our students. So exciting times, and there was no building committee meeting this month, but I do anticipate that there will be one in February as well. So if you have any questions, happy to, happy to take them.
All right.
Thank you, that's it.
All right, great, thank you. Other administrative reports?
No, I have a couple things coming up a little later on the agenda.
Sounds good. Student representative report, back over to Andrew.
So just to add a couple things from before the holidays, we had our holiday sweater competition, including with five categories, including most creative and most festive, and we had a really good turnout with that. Each student who won each category won a trophy, and they were announced on the announcements at the end of the day, so that was a really fun way to just have some good school spirit going into the break. Also, before the break, we had LHS Writing Center College Essay Week, which was an entire week of different workshops to help students from, with students tutoring, other students from the Writing Center in their college essays, and including supplements and the general common app essay. So it was a really good week, because obviously all those essays were due January first. So yeah, it was really good. And then the cast list for the senior cosplay Frozen was announced today, and that will be performed in mid-March. We're excited about that.
Nice, that's always a good one. And congratulations to you, right here, you've made some decisions about your college plans.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, do you want to tell?
Yeah, I'm going to Colby College in the fall.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Not as importantly, but do you have a role in the senior cosplay?
No, I don't.
You're a busy man, and a man of many talents, so I thought maybe that was a possibility.
That'll be a fun show, that's always nice. Nice night. All right, wonderful. Other reports, LPBC, Zach?
No report.
All right, thank you. Energy and Sustainability, Estelle?
All right, I have a couple of reports. So one is they are going to resend the survey because they only received one hundred ninety-five responses, so they're looking for more folks in the town to respond to their survey, and I know the superintendent shared with the, you know, family members, so if, you know, you're able to share it again, that'll be much appreciated from their committee. The other one is, I know there is a coordination, another meeting regarding the idling that I know you have scheduled, but the other one, they are planning a future planet fiesta on May third at the Green, where a lot of, I know three high school students are involved. I don't know if you are aware, Andrew, it's okay, but, so they're going to have an auction, they're hoping to auction a compost, having a recycling fashion show, and they're working to have some food vendor and exhibitor, so more details to follow from the sustainment, Energy and Sustainability Committee.
All right, great, thank you, that sounds like fun. And Seal, Michaela?
This one's Seal meeting was canceled, I'm believing it's going to be rescheduled, and so the next meeting is February twelfth on Zoom from the Department of Developmental Services on transition planning.
All right, great.
That's it, yep.
Thank you. All right, Finance Subcommittee, we'll turn over to which of you gentlemen's going to...
I can start off. We have three building use requests that are in your packet tonight on, in a consent agenda. The first is from the Blueberry Hill PTO for use of the Blueberry Hill Parking Lot in, for a five K in Carnival on May eighteenth, from eight AM to one thirty PM. The second request is from the Glenbrook PAC for the annual Bulldog Dash of five K on May fourth, for use of the Glenbrook on, from seven thirty AM to eleven thirty PM. And the last one is a request from the National Multiple Sclerosis Society. They are already approved for use of the high school. They are looking for a hydration station at Williams for their annual charity walk, which is on, I believe, May third and May fourth, it's from nine AM to one PM, and that would be at the parking lot of Williams. We are in conversations with the MS Society, because there is a lacrosse tournament here, to maybe see if we can move their event to start at Williams, so there's not so much congestion on the high school site, but we should talk with them. So those are the three building use requests we have tonight.
All right, we have a possible motion related to a consent agenda.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the January fourteenth, two thousand twenty five, school committee meeting as presented.
All right, so as a reminder, there is no discussion of items if they are on a consent agenda, so if we would like to have one or more of the items on the consent agenda discussed, we'd have to vote to remove an item from the consent agenda. Does anyone have a request to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we have a motion, do we have a second?
We have a second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well.
And then there are two FY twenty five budget reports in your packet, they are informational, just kind of tracking where we are in terms of monitoring the FY twenty five budget. One is the year-to-date budget report that has some projections through June thirtieth. At this point, it shows us with a possible small deficit. Again, I would say because my projections are conservatively high, I'm not overly concerned about that at this point, but we'll continue to monitor it. And then there is the, an updated revolving account report showing transactions, revenue and expenditures through January thirteenth. So they're informational, but I'm happy to answer any questions now, or if a member has some that come up after the meeting.
All right, any questions related to either of those five items? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Policy. Policy Subcommittee met on December thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. Does someone have a report for that? Is that Julie?
I was there. We had a very substantive meeting. It was erudite, and it was, you know, it was, it was very, it was very respectful, and we discussed how to approach different funds in terms of, you know, the boosters, and we were going to be looking for a little clarification on to kind of categorizing the quantity of amounts, you know, as far as the funds, what would constitute a gift, what would constitute a booster, possibly, you know, creating a salary for a certain coaching position, be it an athletic booster. And so we're going to be getting that information back and hopefully coming up with a more cogent definition, you know, to be able to categorize what is a gift, what is a, what would be salary supplementation, so that we could, you know, come up with a policy that would keep us in a good place as far as Title IX is concerned. We don't want to get on the wrong side of any regulations there, want to make sure everything's above board, and yeah, so we'll continue to evaluate that moving forward.
All right, great.
Just a quick mention that, as a follow-up to that, we had, at the request of the Policy Subcommittee, reissued the Booster Club inventory that we had sent last year, and really to try and get a handle on the level of donations and support that are provided by the Booster Club in the areas that Adam mentioned, so the results of that are coming in, and when we have a full response, we can reconvene Policy Sub or perhaps Finance Sub to take a look at that as well.
All right, great, thank you, appreciate that. Curriculum Sub, we have a recommended motion related to approving minutes from a Curriculum Sub meeting earlier this year.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the August fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, Curriculum Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well, same thing related to the Evaluation Subcommittee meeting.
I move that that same school committee approve the minutes to the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty four, Evaluation Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right, that brings us into ongoing business, which will begin with the middle school building project. Do you have anything else on that right now?
Nothing beyond what we talked about earlier.
Okay, perfect. School committee assignments, so the Wellness Committee, we have, do you want to tackle that one?
Certainly. So per your policy, we are obliged to review the wellness, your wellness policy, and so that should happen every three years or so, so Nilda Irisari is heading up that work for us. She has assembled some staff and parents to take a look at our wellness policy. This is a policy that covers things relating to nutrition education and recess and physical activity and some requirements of our food service program. That's a fairly comprehensive program, or policy rather, and so your policy does require that the school committee be involved with that Wellness Committee policy review. I think if there are changes to the wellness policy, it would eventually be brought back to the Policy Subcommittee, but if any committee member is available, we have meetings coming up on February twelfth, March twelfth, and April ninth, recognize that the timing of these, this may not work for your own calendars, but even if it isn't, if there is a committee member who would volunteer at least to be a liaison to that Wellness Committee, I'm sure that would fulfill the requirement, and that that person could then sort of report back to the full committee or the Policy Subcommittee. So if there's any committee member who's interested in these matters and...
I can liaise, I think I liaise as well as the best of them.
Perfect. All right, so you're good to do that, and you'll look at the calendar and figure out...
Yeah, my wife doesn't have anything on those days, so I think I'm free.
I'll pass it along to Nilda, thanks.
Great, thank you so much. All right, new business, that brings us to school improvement plans, and we have a brief presentation related to school improvement plans, tying them into our district improvement plans.
The individual school improvement plans have been with you for some time now, and it's an opportunity for me to provide the committee with an overview of those individual school improvement plans, and potentially consider a motion to support those plans. So if I could, I'll just pull up a slide deck. So the school improvement plans, this was a presentation that we had originally slated for November twenty sixth, but wanted to make sure that committee had an opportunity to review the plans in their entirety and as a whole. The district growth and improvement for me has always been based on three principles that have been near and dear to me as an administrator for a long time, and that is a commitment to continuous improvement. When I was a young assistant principal, I worked under Superintendent Tom McGary, who coached all of us on the principles of continuous improvement, and so that's been something that's been part of my orientation for a long time. Dr. McGary also helped me understand systemic alignment and the concepts of synergy, how when we're all, the gears are all turning in the same direction, it produces greater effects and greater energy. So I've kind of kept these principles near and dear to my approach to district growth and improvement, so shout out to Dr. Tom McGary, former superintendent in Long Meadow, had a big influence on my, my career. The planning cycle, we have introduced school improvement plans that line up cyclically with our district improvement plan, and so the cycle that we are on represents a district improvement cycle that would run from December first, two thousand twenty four, through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty seven, so we're sort of at about three o'clock right now on this, on this planning cycle. The thought is that the plans would, though we have mapped out three-year plans at the school level, the thought is that they would potentially need to be tweaked and adjusted based on new realities and new needs in the years ahead, but, you know, the hope would be that if we were to get the committee's approval tonight, that we would continue with plan implementation and do our best to implement and monitor our progress along the way, and then in the fall of twenty five, we'd be back, we'd be back to that plan assessment and plan revision stage, so always on that three-year planning cycle. School improvement plans by statute are developed by school councils. School councils are representative, school-based committees that consist of principal, parents, teachers, and other community members annually. The law requires that they develop school improvement plans that are consistent with student needs, and you have some specific policies relating to the development of school improvement plans under school councils in your policy manual. Our district improvement goals, which hopefully the committee and the community are increasingly familiar with, are, reflect a commitment to data-driven MTSS processes based on the principles of universal design for learning, to ensure that learning is accessible to all students. It's based on a commitment to inclusive practice, to reflect the diversity of our learning community. It's based on a commitment to embedding the vision of the graduate system-wide, and it's based on a commitment to creating safe and supportive school learning environments. So under each of those goals, there are a number of different objectives that are embedded in our district improvement plan, and again, I hope you see the school improvement plans reflected in this broad overview of the district improvement plan that is shown here. So tonight, I'd like to just do my best, though the, the school improvement plans are dense documents that are in your meeting packet... So tonight, I'd like to just do my best, though the school improvement plans are dense documents that are in your meeting packet, I wanted to do my best to just overview the school improvement plans and highlight some objectives that cut across all of the schools. So at the elementary level, the, there's a significant commitment to the rollout of Panorama and the refinement of those MTSS practices. And when we talk about MTSS, we're talking about tiered systems of support. So a couple of screenshots here to reflect the power and potential of Panorama. Let me start, I'll start with this one. Panorama is a tool that we adopted this year. And I think the rollout of Panorama will take us really many years. We're exploring the capabilities of this powerful tool and really feel strongly that it's a tool that will help us become more aligned in our MTSS processes. And it will help us be even more data-driven in terms of tracking student progress, monitoring their progress, and intervening as necessary. So what you're seeing here is a screenshot of a school-wide overview. And with Panorama, students can be designated as excelling, as on-track, as at-risk, or at a critical phase in the areas of academics, attendance, behavior, and social-emotional learning. And we're at different places in terms of our, our use of Panorama. I think at the elementary level, there's, the focus really is largely on tracking student academic performance using the tools of Panorama. And so this is a more granular view of school-based distribution of students in the four categories that we mentioned. And you'll notice on the left that Panorama allows us to filter and get reports based on a number of different categories. If we wanted to understand the performance of a particular student demographic, if we wanted to understand trends, if we wanted to look at the intervention plans that are in place. So it's, you can see it's a very powerful, very robust tool. And we're really at the early, early stages of using Panorama to support student learning. This next slide maybe will provide sort of the best overview for you. This is now at the student level where we're able to take a look at, let's say, a student's responses to an SEL survey to understand their experience with self-efficacy, whether or not they believe that they can, can produce quality work. We can look at attendance patterns, we can look at academic patterns, and really understand at the individual student level how students are performing. And then to back to drive, you know, you can drill down to any, any one particular indicator. In this case, this is a screenshot of how a district might evaluate chronic absenteeism across the district. So you have the ability to take a look at the number of students who are deemed to be chronically absent. And you can look at your 10-day moving averages, your monthly comparisons, your yearly comparisons to see if that's an indicator that we're, that we're doing better on over time. So early-stage use of Panorama. But our teachers, particularly at the elementary level, are using it to refer students for MTSS intervention. They're using it to develop and monitor intervention plans. And Panorama represents sort of one-stop shopping in terms of it's one place where teachers and interventionists, administrators, counselors can, can look at a student's performance on a universal screener, they can look at a student's attendance, they can even get some sense of how they might be responding to SEL surveys. So it's, it really provides that one singular place that teachers and administrators can go to evaluate student performance and decide what intervention plans make sense for a particular student. So we're really excited about Panorama. Like I said, early-stage use of it. And we're still learning about the capabilities and exploring how it works for, for our kids and our teachers. So it's an exciting tool for us. Wouldn't mind stopping there for a minute because I think if you went through our school improvement plans, you probably would see Panorama represented, you know, repeatedly. So just want to give the Committee an opportunity to ask any questions you might have about Panorama or if there's questions you have after the meeting, we're happy to answer those as well.
Questions from anyone?
I'm assuming you don't put social security in there.
Love the question. Panorama, it's siloed and although it integrates with Panorama, it is siloed and it didn't get hit with the data breach that, that we experienced earlier. So, good question though. I mean, as, I think it is, you know, kidding aside, it's something that as we bring these additional tools on, you know, we just have to make sure that they are, that they have appropriate data privacy controls in place. We do belong to a data privacy consortium. So the tools that we use as educators have to pass muster with that data privacy consortium. So that's one way that we sort of, you know, work to make sure that, that student's data is private and protected and particularly when you're talking about these sort of extensions of, of Power School. Good question though.
Michaela?
Yeah, I just, I think you for showing this to us because it's really cool. And I love how timely it is for kids, especially in elementary school, you know, and that it's universal to all teachers to see it. I was just wondering, is it something that like syncs from all the other databases? Or do you have to like input, teachers input all the information in here?
Yeah, we, we, the teacher interface with Panorama would involve accessing an MTSS referral form. So they might have to enter some information about what, what teaching techniques they've used in class to support a student. But Panorama would pull all the universal screeners, they would pull MCAS data, they would pull attendance data. So we're trying to make sure that it's not burdensome to educators in terms of having to enter information. So for the most part, we're finding that it seamlessly integrates with Power School. But Tom has worked closely with our tech staff on this as well. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is there anything you'd add to...
Yeah, no, I think we're still actually pulling in some of the historical data. Maybe the other piece is the development of a plan would be within Panorama also in terms of an intervention plan and then be able to update it as they monitor progress of the student in terms of the key indicators.
And then, you know, just...
That's awesome because I feel like then there's no loopholes. If a kid's changed transitioning to a new school, you can like go in there and see all that. But something like the student, like if, so for example, if I was teaching second grade at one of the schools and I did an SEL student survey with my class, do they do it like on Panorama? Or is that like information that if I want track, I have to like put in every month?
I believe they're using their Chromebooks to respond to SEL surveys and so it wouldn't require that data entry.
Yeah, I think if you're using one of the surveys that is part of the Panorama platform, the information would be contained within it. But if it is a self-developed or a district-developed one that's not in Panorama, then the information probably would have to be added. But I think through our student information specialists, they can usually upload mass information from a spreadsheet or, you know, some whatever type of electronic information we have available.
That's, it seems like really cool that you could just do it right on through the Chromebook to Panorama and have that information every month and track it.
You make a great point too, Michaela, about sort of making sure that we're supporting students as they transition from grade to grade and school to school so that now the receiving teacher can look back and see, you know, get some information on the student's progress and see what interventions, if any, were in place. They can look back at universal screening data, they can look back at attendance data. So I think it will help with creating a more seamless transition for kids from year to year. So I appreciate you pointing that out.
All right, other questions and thoughts? I'll let you keep going.
Sure, so to build on that, the Panorama surveys, we do anticipate that there's a number of Panorama surveys that we can access that will help us understand students' sense of belonging. And then there's even tie-ins to the VOG that can be implemented through these surveys. So we're excited about that. To hit the high schools' work on Goal One, Tom Landers has been working with his staff on the development of formative assessments. This was a recommendation that came out of the NEASC reaccreditation process. And it's really encouraging to see that our high school educators are diving into the development of formative assessments. Candidly, when I was teaching high school years ago, it wasn't really part of my practice. But increasingly, we're recognizing that, you know, we can, we can create better instruction if we're doing these formative assessments along the way. Jump ahead. The second goal relates to inclusive practice for a diverse learning community. Dave Allen at Blueberry is doing some interesting work with his staff representing student identity. I've been pleased to see some of the ways that his staff has created activities, school-wide activities or classroom-based activities to highlight different cultural traditions, different religious traditions, different ethnic traditions. And so students have an opportunity to showcase their own backgrounds, but also learn from others as well. So I'm thinking about an activity I saw at one grade level, I forget what grade level it was, but it was a beginning-of-the-year activity, it was an all-about-me activity. And the teacher encouraged the students to represent their individual traditions to their classmates so that it was a good learning experience for the kids. Again, at the middle level, Nicole Forres, who's got a strong background in instructional leadership, has set for the middle schools a commitment to learning walks to make sure that we are evaluating inclusive practice across all classrooms. Tom Landers has done some great work at the high school with his staff around staff diversification. But he's interested in creating a website and materials that demonstrate that we are looking for diverse applicants. And we've talked a little bit about the different ways we can reach out to different organizations, different college and career centers to ensure that we're sending messages that we are very interested in diverse applicant pools. Around embedding the vision of the graduate, again at Blueberry, recognizing VOG learning behaviors. So each month, Blueberry, for example, is highlighting one of the learner behaviors associated with the vision of the graduate, and they're doing some formal recognition activities. So one month it might be critical thinking. And so during that month, teachers will identify students from classrooms who through their coursework have demonstrated critical thinking and they're doing some formal recognition of that. So it's a good way to get the students to understand the complexity of the vision of the graduate. One of the big pushes for the middle school over the next few years will be developing a new program of studies. I think this will involve creating, initially creating a program of studies reflective of our, our current practice. We don't actually have a program of studies at the middle school, many, many middle schools do. But we would like to get a program of studies on paper so that families, students, staff really understands the breadth of the program and they understand what the expectations are at various grade levels and in various courses. So once we get that down, then obviously we would be looking to develop a new program of studies for the new middle school to open hopefully in the fall of '28. And then Mr. Landers, again with his staff at the high school, really evolving and changing how they're using those connect blocks to foster VOG competencies. They sort of had their first experience with connect blocks, I guess it was last year. And they've made some adjustments to those connect blocks based on staff and student feedback. So grateful that the high school has created these sort of timeouts during the day occasionally to promote some of those important VOG competencies. And then finally, creating safe school climates and safe learning environments for students. So as an example, at Wolf Swamp, Mr. Materis and his staff have begun the development of the student surveys. And then one of the other ways that this is happening is through the new IEP process. And so students as young as preschool have an opportunity to have their voice heard at team meetings, which is kind of exciting. So the youngest students will, if they're available for a team meeting, would have an opportunity to talk about what their goals are, what their hopes are. And that really isn't, really lines up nicely with the vision of the graduate, which really tries to get students to be in charge of their own learning. So I'm happy that the, the IEP team meeting process is also reflective of that. At the middle level, ruler strategies to promote positive learning environments. Both schools have developed school-wide charters to help everyone understand what the behavioral expectations are. And then at the classroom level, they're developing those charters as well. So engaging kids in the process of developing those charters, those behavioral agreements, has been really powerful. And then finally, kudos to the high school for tapping into in-house expertise to be sure they understand how to support neurodivergent learners. So there's been a considerable amount of professional development at the high school that has been provided by LHS teachers with expertise in critical areas. One of those being ways to support neurodivergent learners. So much, much more to our school improvement plans. But I hope that provides a bit of an overview for some of the common goals that are cut across all the school improvement plans. And so happy to answer any questions that you might have or take back any feedback that you have.
Any questions from anyone? Thank you very much for putting that together. And a big thank you to our administrators at each of our schools and also to the school councils for the work they put into those and that alignment to the district improvement plans. If anyone has any other comments, questions, and/or possible recommended motions.
I do feel moved. I, I move on the recommendation of the individual school councils and the superintendent that the School Committee approved the 24 to, 2024 to 2027 school improvement plans for Blueberry Hill School, Center School, Wolf Swamp Road School, Glenbrook Middle School, Williams Middle School, and Long Meadow High School as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, we will head to a roll call vote, Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach? Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well, thank you again. All right, moving forward, we have a possible acceptance of a gift. The Blueberry Hill PTO has offered to purchase some new furniture for the school library. And that would require the approval of the School Committee, there's a possible motion.
I move that the School Committee accepted with genuine appreciation the donation for the Blueberry Hill PTO of furniture for the school library.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Do we know how much money we're...
I don't actually remember, is that in the...
How much it cost? How much it cost?
Exactly how much?
Five thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Awesome.
Fantastic. All right, it's a wonderful gift, thank you very much.
I've never gotten a gift like that.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well, thank you very much, Blueberry Hill PTO. We also have an overnight field trip request coming from the high school student council. Are you heading into that?
Yes, for NEASC, I would not be going, but it's a very important event. We're running one of our juniors, I don't know if we're out to name who they are yet, for president of the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils.
Very exciting.
Yeah, so it's really important that we get good participation of a lot of sophomores and juniors to help campaign for them, and it's just a really good turnout overall with students from all across the state, and you have to hear a lot of different diverse perspectives on how to better run our councils.
All right, wonderful. You guys have gone to that before, if I recall, and had a really excellent time at that conference.
Yeah, definitely.
Taken a lot away from that. I remember you guys came back and you gave a little presentation about what you had. All right, awesome. So, the dates for that are March 5th through 7th, 2025. We have a possible motion.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent, the school committee approved the overnight field trip for the students from Long Meadow High School to travel to, all the way to Hyannis, Massachusetts, on 5th through 7th, 2025.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. I look forward to hearing about the conference again this year, thank you. All right, next up, MCAS determination.
All right, sure. So you'll recall that in the November statewide elections, the ballot question eliminated MCAS as a requirement to achieve the competency determination for students to earn a diploma. And so while MCAS was eliminated as the basis for earning that competency determination, the state would still say that local districts have to, have to ensure that a competency determination is made. And so because this affects, and members of the class of 25, of current seniors, it's important that school committees across the state sort of certify what their competency determination is. So in our case, and really what's happening in most communities across the state, is that school committees are certifying that their local graduation requirements are the competency determination. And so, I guess it would be my recommendation to tonight that you certify that by passing our local graduation requirements, students can earn that Massachusetts competency determination. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Just to add in some clarifying information for anyone watching at home, or anyone who might need it, that list of current graduation requirements is a component of the Long Meadow High School Program of Studies, which is reviewed and approved each year by the Curriculum Subcommittee and also by the school committee as a whole, and can be found online as well. Any other questions related to this?
Seems like you guys know what you're doing.
Hopefully.
To clarify for anyone else who's maybe wondering about this, would this change be retroactive as of this point, or is it related to the class of 2025 and forward? Particularly, our vote related to this?
Yeah, it would just, and just be for the class of 25. I think, once we have some additional guidance from Dessie on this-
Circle back.
We might want to circle back and, and, you know, kind of look at our local graduation requirements, and, you know, what we think should a competency determination could be. You know, it could be that you just simply revert to the courses and credits that are laid out in the program of studies, or there might be some other approach that you'll want to consider to have students earn that competency determination. But this is really just for the class of 25. We don't want to change the rules in the middle of the game for the class of 25, so that would be unfair and a burden on the staff as well, so.
All right, we'll look forward to more insight from Dessie and some conversations at Curriculum Sub, and possibly Advisory Committee moving forward.
There you go.
All right, any further questions or discussion, and/or possible motion?
Does the motion need to stipulate, then, that this pertains specifically to the class of 25?
That would be a good idea, yeah. You could add that to the motion, yeah.
Well, in that case, I do feel moved that the school, the school committee certify that LPS students from the class of 2025 can meet the state of Massachusetts competency determination for graduation by fulfilling the current Long Meadow High School graduation requirements.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right, that brings us to our last and final motion related to an executive session.
This is the long one. I move that the school committee meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, and H, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene an open session.
Okay, we have a possible motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. We are adjourned, and we'll see everyone in a few weeks. Thank you, have a good evening.
Good home, safe, men.